Okay, let's begin. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We will do the Pledge of Allegiance now.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with no beginning and justice for all.
Well, I've never seen a crowd sitting on Go so ready to stand up and salute. It must have been a long meeting yesterday, right? First item is approval of the minutes of the mining workshop, which was yesterday afternoon, all afternoon, I might add.
July 14th.
Oh, Lord, I'm, I'm, timeout. July 14th meeting, which was another long afternoon. So, and then we have, after that, we have approval of the July 24th meetings, minutes of the meeting. We'll take them one at a time.
Move the July 14th minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. 24th.
Motion.
Not a motion, a second?
Second.
Thank you. All approves. Third. Well, we're running hard tonight.
Wake up.
Yep. Next item is public hearings. The first item is first impression childcare. I see they're well represented. Request for a special exception use approval for a childcare facility to be known as first impression childcare. Gladys Williams owner. Okay. John? Or is it Mark?
I'll, I'll take this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. For the record, I'm Stan Bowling County Planning Director, and it's good to see you all again. Mr. Chairman, if I can.
It's quasi judicial. Would anybody who care to speak on this, please stand up and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Yes, Stan, you're gonna take this? Go ahead.
Yes. This request is for a special exception use because it proposes a childcare facility in a single-family zoning district. So this is the first public hearing. You all will make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and there'll be a subsequent hearing probably next month, and they can take final action on their request. The subject site is located on two planted lots off of Ninth Court Southwest. It's located about a half a block south of Oslo Road. It's on the west side of the street. The whole area, you can see it's in darker brown on this particular slide, is zone multifamily, RM6, residential multifamily, up to six units per acre. A little bit further south along the street, the zoning changes to single-family, and more or less the character is, is single-family, but it is a bit, a bit denser zoned area in the county. This is the aerial of the subject site, two lots and two existing single-family homes, and the proposal is to convert these two single-family homes into a childcare facility, basically a small-scale type of childcare facility. We've had, in the last couple of years, some of these conversions. The last one was approved last October in the Gifford area, along a local street, converting a single-family home into a small-scale type of childcare, and it is allowed by special exception. For this particular center that's proposed, again with those two existing houses being converted, it's a daycare center and with an office use for the daycare center, up to 22 kids, based on state requirements, in this facility, on two lots. Parking that's required for this size facilities, four spaces and four are proposed. There is a drop-off area with a circular driveway, and they are proposing the, the type C landscape buffer with a six-foot opaque feature, and they're dedicating five feet of right-of-way along Ninth Court Southwest to meet our local road right-of-way standard. This is a picture of the site plan, and you all have a sample of this in your backup material. Couple of things I just wanted to point out. One is that there will be improvements and a circular driveway put in with this facility, and the parking spaces off of that driveway will be convenient drop-off facility. The two, uh, single-family residences will be converted to the, to the daycare use, and then the office for the daycare use here, and then a playground area in the back. What is proposed for the six-foot opaque feature is what's been approved in other kind of small-scale childcare facilities and single-family areas, and that's a six-foot wood fence. It's pretty characteristic in a lot of single-family areas, and then the landscaping on both sides of the fence. It'll be actually landscaped on both sides of the fence, and it'll secure the playground area in the back as well. There are specific land use criteria for childcare facilities, and this plan satisfies it. It's off of a paved road with sufficient access. It has the drop-off area, the correct type of buffering, and a six-foot opaque feature that, that can fit into this, this single-family area. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board grant a special exception approval for this facility with the two conditions recommended in staff's report. One is kind of a standard condition that prior to certificate of occupancy, all of the required buffering and the six-foot opaque feature be installed, and also that the five feet of right-of-way along Ninth Court Southwest be dedicated without compensation. Be glad to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yes. The six-foot fences, is it going all the way to the road in the front yard?
I don't believe it's going all the way.
Going to the plan, it looks like it's going.
It's going pretty close in front of the house.
Take a look at the, at the site plan here, real quick. Got the site plan? Let's see how close it goes. I know it won't go out into the right-of-way, so there's separation between the actual physical roadway.
But it would be in the front yard, so to speak.
That's correct.
And that's allowed? A six-foot fence in the?
A, a six-foot fence is not allowed in the, in the setback, the front yard setback, unless approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if you hold on for a second, we'll find out exactly how far forward.
It looked to me like it went up almost to the right-of-way.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading, too.
What it looks like on the plan.
And I think your question is that we, the six-foot, we always stop in the back, but.
We stop at the, for the front edge of the house, anyway.
Childcare facilities, we tend to make, I think we've made some exceptions.
The six-foot opaque feature requirement is around the, basically the, the playground area. That's, that's where the buffering is. So it, it could certainly be stopped either at the back or the front of the house, you know?
At the front of the house, I would.
And it could be four feet tall, anywhere beyond the house, if they wanted to put it.
I mean, that's, it depends on what you think about the kids and the driveway. I don't, I don't think anybody has a problem.
The visual effect, when someone's driving down the road to see a six-foot high fence close to the road. I'd like to see that dropped to four feet from the front of the house to the road.
Sure. You all can stipulate that, and, and we could have that revised on the plan.
Visual effect.
The only other thing, question was, is, I mean, I thought we had, really had tried to get away from wooden fences. I think in this circumstance, I really don't have an objection to it. I just don't want to change anything into the future. I mean, I think that we, we need to continue that move if we can.
Right, and, and staff agrees. The reason we recommended for in this case is where we've had single, we've had conversions of single-family homes to childcare of this scale in single-family neighborhoods. We tried to keep it, look as much like a single-family home.
Right.
And, and kind of fit in, so it's been allowed on other ones.
I mean, I'm sympathetic to the cost. I mean, so I, and I think that it looks, it's not a problem.
Were the neighbors notified?
Yes.
Yes.
Any objections?
We haven't had any objections, um, any calls in.
I doubt it. They're probably glad to have them. Be my thought. So.
On page two, under six recreation area, it refers to a six-foot high PVC fence. So I assume they originally were coming in with the PVC and then took a look at the cost factor and?
I think originally, uh, there was reference to a, to a four-foot tall fence, and one of the earlier options was to have larger landscaping and to make that, that six-foot opaque feature. I think when they looked at the cost of getting species that big at planting, they, it was, it was amended, I know during, during Packet Week to go to a six-foot wood fence to, to meet that requirement.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Would the applicant care to be heard? Mr. Biddle?
Well, he's coming up. I agree with Jerry on the four-foot in front of the house.
Okay.
Joe Biddle, Shulkey Billings Standard, uh, the engineer for the project. We can change the fencing, whatever you all would like. I have no problem dropping it back. Um, it's my understanding that these children aren't, they're not.
They're not gonna be out front.
I mean, at least toddlers and infants or something. It's a smaller daycare.
Yeah.
Just from the, the front of the house to the road, forward.
That's no problem at all.
And this is gonna be all remodeled, these houses, I assume?
That's my understanding, too. So hopefully.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, staff? We'll open the public hearing. Would anyone care to speak to the subject at hand? If you do, come up to the mic and state your name, address, and then whatever your thoughts Either mic is fine, Ms. Williams.
Good evening. I'm Brett Mahetti-Hagans, and we're from the New Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, located at nine, um, 25 Southwest, Ninth Street, and these are members of the congregation. We was concerned, uh, church been there over 80 years, and we was concerned about the, the rate of traffic and the distance from this proposed daycare center to the location of our church.
Patty, have you seen the plan? I think they're, they're calling for, uh?
Just on the back of the ladder that we got.
Um, Joe, come up, please, and let, let's explain this to her. Show, if we got a site plan or something, we can show her. It's, it's, it's not, I don't think it's gonna have that effect, and you all?
How far away is it, Joe?
It's, it's, the church is near the end of the, is on the, kind of at the end of the road.
Is this, is this the church location where the cursor is now? Is that, is it to the east of Ninth Court?
It's on the east side of, uh?
Right, right. I think.
Ninth Court.
Right.
On the east side, right on the, uh?
Oslo Road.
Right. Off Ninth, uh, Ninth Street.
Right. I think, I think it's here on the aerial.
Corner of Ninth and Ninth.
This is the church?
Right.
And Ninth Court is a little bit to the west of the church?
Right, right.
Right, and so it's, it's basically the, the fourth and fifth house down that this, this daycare facility is proposed.
Joe, is it gonna be operating on weekends also?
Um, I don't think so. It's just a daycare center for the weekdays.
So how many kids, and are they talking about?
I believe it was twenty.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Is the maximum.
Yeah, with two people on staff typically.
Dropping off morning and how, and afternoon, or, or is it five o'clock, or?
They staggered.
How late do you?
They staggered. They're gonna eight or nine and have to work, so.
I would imagine there are walkers. There's some walkers involved. You know, you're probably not gonna have 22 cars.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I, that's, they're hoping for 22 people, but I'm not sure how many they'll have. I mean, it's a maximum of 22. And I'm, I've been down that road, and there's minimum traffic. Like I said, there's just kids running around, and these are just infants and toddlers, so.
That's kind of the main road to get, I forget what street it is now.
Thirteenth Street.
Where Habitat, Habitat.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. Another block south, you take Ninth Court, it goes down to Eleventh Street Southwest, which goes all the way over to Thompson and?
Right, you can't go any further east on the parallel street to Ninth Street Southwest, whatever that would be. But it's not a lot of traffic. I'm there often, it's not a lot of traffic.
Is that, was that yours big concern, is traffic?
The traffic? Well, we're concerned about the, the increased traffic because this last week, one of the other churches further down south of us had two incidents of vandalism. We, we haven't experienced that, so naturally we're concerned about, um, different flux of people coming into the community. We do have service there once a week, every week, and on occasion it is, it could be multiple nights during the week, so we're concerned about the influx of that and any negative impact it may have on our church. I mean, it's not a new church, it's been there for over 80 years, but we would like for things to remain as it is.
I'm, I'm unsure of any impact it would have on our church. I think it's a big concern.
Do you have, do you all?
I can only hope that the parents are dropping off and?
And these are toddlers, right?
Yeah, that's my understanding, so I, I suppose they're responsible.
Preschool children.
That's what I under, I think it's toddlers and infants, so.
You're just worried about traffic. You don't really have an objection to the use of the buildings.
We don't have objection to the, to the, to the use of the building. We just don't want any, and the increased traffic to be, our church to be a target.
They may come by and buy breakfast on Saturday from you all, you know?
Well, and if I may ask, where the driveway? Where's, where's your driveway for the church? On Ninth Street Southwest.
South of Ozil.
Is it the increased traffic that you have a concern with, or an increased potential for vandalism?
Both. Because, you know, when you open up a business, you can get potential clients from anywhere in the county. They may not all be from there, in Oslo area. We, we haven't had a problem so far, and that's why we're raising the question. Um, it's always been family homes on that street and, and a regular amount of traffic, but the type of clients, you know, our different types of clients that would be needing the service for that church, and we're not against that, but we just don't want our, our church to be a target for potential vandalism.
I don't know if there's any way we can stop that. I don't think the traffic, there's a traffic issue because it's, I don't see it impacting you because of the Ninth Street Southwest is, is a major road anyway, and your parking, your driveway entrance is not even off Ninth Court, so I don't see the traffic impacting you, and I don't know what we can do about potential vandalism in, from the clientele. I don't see, how we can make any ruling on that.
Well, also, I believe the farm's ditch is on the south side, which is separation also from the church and Oslo Road. I mean, it was, I'm not sure how to address.
People do use our church driveway ongoing even before they finish fixing the road, uh, coming in and turning around and going back out. That's always been happening. So, uh, but we just want to voice our concerns and let it be on public records that we do have these concerns.
We, it's a, it's a tough question here because I think that in that area, when different people, I mean, childcare is a primary issue for the, a lot of people in this county. Affordable childcare especially, and I don't, I don't think traffic will be an issue either, Hattie. But I'm not, you know, the vandalism, you know, maybe sit Willie out there with the truck and let him snipe at people, I, I don't know.
Stan? Stan? Can you, can you put, uh, one of the diagrams back to show Oslo Road?
The driveway's so small, I think the traffic numbers are not very high.
There's a right one there. You can't really see it now. Do you know if there's, if there's a cross, a cross drive there on Oslo at that point?
Yes.
Down Ninth Court?
Yeah, they've just redid that intersection. And I believe there's a, if the aerial, you can see there are access point for the church. I guess it's, looks like it's to the east more, so that's actually piped. That's a farm's ditch is on that side, and it's pretty deep.
I understand the concern about the possibility of vandalism because we know those things, the potential for that's always there, but I don't think because of the, um, new openings in Oslo Road now, I don't think that traffic, I don't see any reason why anyone would even think about turning around in the churchyard associated with going in the Ninth Court.
Well, I, no.
Well, I think it's been a nightmare with the construction, but I think once that's completed.
It's finished, yeah.
Should be fine.
But this year do come and turn around, and for what reason? I don't know.
I'm sure.
I do want to clarify one thing because we did ask if the neighbors had been notified. And were you, was?
We got a ladder.
You have a notice? Okay, that's just, all right. Okay. Thank you.
I, I wanted to.
What, your name, please, sir, and, and your address?
My sister.
I, I know.
Yes. And, um, what, what bothers me, uh, first of all, I don't have no objection of them having the, because I know them real good. My son is my son's auntie. But my concern is, is that, uh, first of all, is, is the age limit on these children gonna be kept there? Uh, the reason I'm, I'm asking that for a reason. Is it gonna be toddlers, uh, five to six years old, four or five years old, or what?
I believe it's two to three year.
I think that they limit out at the first, at kindergarten, preschool ages.
Exactly. The use, the use itself is preschool.
They can't stay there when they gotta go to the public school.
Oh, okay. And that, that was my concern, because the reason I wanted to, uh, avoid that opinion is because, uh, we, we know you can't, we can't start these vandalism. That gonna happen. I, I don't care if daycare center comes, or do come, or don't come. It's gonna happen. I mean, some places are targeted, you know, for that reason, but, uh, I think it could be increased because, like she had said earlier, uh, when you're dealing with a kid, uh, daycare center, you, you don't know what type of people is gonna bring their children, what kind of background they may have, et cetera, et cetera. And, and for instance, uh, someone could be dropping off a child, and they have a long criminal record, uh, you know, vandalism.
Can't be more than five-year-old's.
Maybe this would be a target for that individual, the church. So this, I think this is what my sister is kinda, kinda worried about.
You're worried about the new people coming in?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I think we understand that. I don't think, I don't know, I don't think we can, I don't know what we can do to stop, stop, stop them from that, but, I mean, we could deny this and not have it happen, and that would change a lot, but I think that would probably be not right for the people in this building either, but.
Well, and I also, I believe that the owners, certainly if they have people who are dropping off children, look like they're gonna be a problem. Obviously, they're not gonna take the children, so.
With, with my kids, I would, if I were you all, I'd be more worried than I picked them up. You had to keep them.
And the last question, hi, is there's a, uh, uh, any special additional, how for a daycare center from a residential, uh, dwelling?
You mean on a regulation standpoint?
Setbacks.
The setbacks?
How many houses were?
Yeah, uh, you know, the distance from the daycare center for some, uh, uh, somebody to a, to a dwelling space.
There's, in the, in the code, there's no, no set, special setback or separation of distance.
Different than another home would be.
Different from another home, that's correct.
Right.
So this daycare center would be seen as just like another dwelling space?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Under the code.
Would that fall under a commercial building?
I don't think so.
Special exception.
I'm not sure.
Well, that, that's correct. It's a special exception, and it allows a use that has some commercial aspects to it in a, in a single-family neighborhood. That's why there's this hearing, and there'll be another one before the board, but in terms of whatever they have, whatever building code they have to follow for access and so forth, some of that might be like you'd have to do for a commercial building, but it'll, it won't look like a commercial building. It's, they're gonna take the existing single-family homes and, and renovate them, but they'll, they'll be the same size. It's not like they're putting a, a new big building there, anything like that.
The reason I asked that question is because I understand the codes here, uh, that, all that stuff out there is commercial, so if, if, if.
On Oslo.
They think they are, they, uh, they, daycare center, they'll be going into a residential zone, and, uh, because that property is next door to us, we want you to own it at one point, but I just typed, we lost, we called type. So, uh, I, we, we, what we wanted to put there at one point, put, uh, house just, uh, the pastor of the church, and we were denied that we couldn't, because it was, it was, uh, commercial.
This next door to the church?
It's across the street.
On the other side?
It's across the street, it is.
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be east of the daycare center and west of that church.
And the existing owners of the daycare center own that property now, also.
But this, this, for instance, approving this application won't change any of the zoning in the area, and then would not be the basis for changing any zoning in the area.
It, it won't be a precedent.
Correct. Not as far as zoning goes, no.
We anticipate mostly local children anyway, right?
I suppose. I mean, most people don't drive from Sebastian. There's enough daycare centers up there, I believe, so I think these are just, you know, coming up in different areas just to satisfy needs for people.
In the local area.
I suppose.
Sir, were you asking how many feet a commercial use has to be from a residential use? Was that your question?
Yes.
What is, what is the buffer between commercial and residential?
Depends on the residential district and the commercial district. It could be a, a type C, or it could be a type B, uh, as in boy. In this case, there's a type C buffer required, as well as that fencing around, around the back.
I think. It's more the buffer than it is distance, isn't it?
That's correct.
There's not an increased setback between commercial and residential?
There's not, just, just buffer requirements.
Thank you.
It has to do with the planting, the shrubbery, what you can see from the neighbor, next-door neighbor, more than it does anything else.
But this daycare center is not next to commercial property?
That's correct.
It's across the street.
No, but he's, he's, I think your point is that it's a commercial use in a residential area.
That's correct.
And that's why he was asking, is there a different buffer for commercial next to residential than, than this is requiring?
Well, and I also think he may be looking in the future for that property across the street if they develop that into commercial.
I mean, that's what I, I think may be more of a concern, I guess, behind the church.
Yeah.
Let's see. Okay.
All right, Dan, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, uh, anyone? Anybody else in the public care to speak? Okay. Public hearing's closed. Gentlemen?
Patty, Scott.
Or lady?
I'm gonna bike. We could do this. I make a motion, we approve it with the fence.
Drop to four feet.
Four-foot fence from the front.
Front of the building up.
Front of the building to the road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is the Point West request to modify the approved plan development. PD, PD, it's a conceptual plan for Point West. Uh, let's see. You, John?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hamner.
You're welcome.
This is a request from Point West, and it's actually to modify conditions that are tied to the conceptual plan, and it's not all that unusual that we have requests to modify either the conceptual plan itself or conditions as a plan development matures and the development occurs, more and more things become clear from the plan that was originally approved. And in this case, they are looking at changing specific conditions that affect specific areas within the property. That requires a public hearing before you all, and a public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners. Essentially, it follows that special exception or rezoning process, so you all are to make a recommendation to the Board on these proposed condition changes, and then the Board at a later meeting will take final action on that. Just like to give you a real brief history of the Point West development. Was approved in 1999. The conceptual plan has been revised twice in July of 2003 and January of 2008. I think you all are familiar with it. It's a mixed-use community, and it is a traditional neighborhood design community. This is a zoning map of the area, and it shows a fairly broad area, the State Road 60 going all the way down to 12th Street. And the striped area is owned PD TND, and that's the Point West property. So that gives you a feel for the size of the project. And again, it goes from State Road 60 on south, from east of 74th on over to the west side. The aerial, on the aerial, I've identified the specific areas that the conditions will affect. And it's the lakes at Point West, which is the very western portion here, and that's a senior community, a senior portion of Point West. The State Road 60 commercial, which are the two parcels adjacent to State Road 60. The town center, which are the two parcels on the north side of 16th Street is the town center. And the East Village, which is essentially the residential portion east of 74th Avenue. With that, I'd like to go over the change in the conditions, and I'm going to toggle back and forth between two slides as I do that. The first item that the applicant's requesting is allowing a certificate of occupancy for up to 65,000 square feet of commercial area in the Point West State Road 60 commercial area prior to completion of 25,000 square feet in the town center. Now, the two State Road 60 commercial parcels are out here, and the town center parcels are here. From the staff's analysis standpoint, we know that the applicant has a site plan approved for town center. They're moving forward with commencement of construction in town center. They've also given you all some backup that we've included in the staff report as attachment one. It talks about a real estate transaction, and from that standpoint, the economic end of changing this condition that a contract purchaser wants also to not be restricted by that condition. And this is a pacing condition, and the staff is comfortable with the pace that the applicant does have a site plan. They are working on commencement of construction within town center. The next condition is that they're requesting to have gates at the lakes at Point West and the East Village, and have gated entrances at this point. And for this, to explain this, I'm going to toggle back to the aerial. And again, the lakes at Point West is this area, and it's fairly well-developed. It's got sort of what they call the core campus, which are some three-story buildings, which are apartments and ALF and some other facilities. And then it's surrounded by single-family homes that I believe the applicants or the residents have a life estate in. There are two entrances, one at the south end, one at the east end, and the applicant's looking to gate those to give the folks a little better feeling of security that are in here. The, the location doesn't connect to anything. This is west field, and there's not a connection here. This is an existing single-family neighborhood. There's no connection here. So it's on the perimeter of the project and doesn't provide any connectivity to any other portion of the county or a major roadway. Similar with the East Village. There's a connection on the west end, connection on the north end. This is undeveloped. It's all single-family residential will be what's constructed here. There are no residents constructed here at this time, and it doesn't provide any connectivity to the south, to the east, or to the north, other than just its own internal residential area. So in staff's analysis, we did not see an issue with providing gating for those two sections of Point West. The last condition or the last change would be allowing a maximum of 15% of the total commercial area to be shifted back and forth between the town center and the State Road 60 commercial area. And it's, if it were to be employed, it's more likely that the commercial area would, may shift to the north, to the State Road 60. But again, that the applicant's looking at that as future flexibility, again, not really having the completely clear vision on exactly what's going to get built out and what the demand's going to be and the market's going to be. So they've asked to have that as a, as a condition. On this particular graphic, the little red stop signs show where the gates are proposed. So there'd be four gates at those locations. And again, that also shows the lack of connectivity and that those are on the perimeter of the project. With that, I'd like to get the staff's recommendation. Staff does recommend that the planning and zoning commission recommended the Board of County Commissioners conceptual plan PD modification and the modification of those conditions as listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone have questions for staff?
I do.
Yes.
Says allowing the shifting of a maximum of 15% of the allowable commercial building area between the town center and the State Road 60 commercial zone. Is that taking into consideration the square footage that has already? I mean...
That would be the total, so it would take into account anything that's been approved or to be approved.
Okay, so that is the, all right, that was my one question. Thank you very much. The other question I have is the gating. When this originally came, or one of the villages came before us, and there was a lot of discussion about not wanting it gated because it's a traditional neighborhood design. Do you remember how those discussions went? I forget, I think it was because of the traditional neighborhood design that the argument was against putting gates in.
Yes, and I believe, recollection serves me, the staff supported that request. It was for the equestrian area, which, let me go back to the plan view.
It's a property to the south.
This area to the south, and that eventually got approved. You're right, because there's a condition that was, a condition of the original conceptual plan, and that's why they're back before us, is that there were to be no gates. And again, as we've, the developments progressed, and we've seen how it's developed, we've become more comfortable with modifying certain conditions where they won't affect the overall plan.
I don't think in the area where security and the elderly section is any question. I think the question would be more for the east portion where the larger area would be, so. Right? Right?
That would be, and again, with the equestrian, they had some of issues with occasionally free-running horses and things like that, which was at...
Right.
As far as the east area, I think the applicants here, and they can explain to you what the concerns are there.
We originally, the commercial section was originally to be down there in the south, not up near the Route 60 area, but the whole concept of that was the walking community, to encourage people to walk from their homes to that little commercial area down there. And now you're going to shift that up to the State Road 60 corridor. That's what you're getting at, right?
The concept of the original plan is correct. It's supposed to be walkable. This commercial was always here. The State Road 60 commercial was always part of the original conceptual plan. And this is geared, you're correct, more towards State Road 60 highway-type commercial. The town center commercial is the more walkable, and that's what the applicants have a plan approved for now, and they can update you on the progress of that plan. But that is to contain more of the walkable elements, the offices, the bistros, the personal services like hair cutting, nail shops, things like that, that would be used by the residents. So...
They're asking, they're asking to transfer some of that, right?
Correct. 15% of the total, which is, it's 198,000, so it's roughly, well, a little under 30,000 it could be.
Is it of the total or of what was approved of each section?
It's the total square footage of that. I believe it's 198,000 and change, so it'd be 15%.
That's 30,000 square feet that could move from one to the other?
That's up to...
That's the way I read it in here.
That's the way I was interpreting too, and that's why I have a problem with it.
On the, this plan here, town center to, it's hard to read it, but it's town center to Route 60 to town. The third paragraph down the last line there, I got it marked out, I can't even read it now. The way I understand the reading of it is to take 15% from the town center, which was 85,000 square feet, and add that to the Route 60. Isn't that what that says?
That's what I'm reading, too.
That's the way I read it.
The phrase here is beside the State Road 60, town center, timing, condition modification. The applicant also proposing a condition to allow up to 15% of the 198 mumble square feet of commercial office building area to be shifted between Route 60 commercial area and town center.
So the way the staff has it structured, it's a total of the overall, so if, if that's a condition, and again, we can let the applicant address it as to what works for them. But if you all want to change that, that's something.
Well, that means they could add 30,000 square feet.
Not add, but shift, correct?
Shift. 30,000 to Route 60, which would make that 150,000 square feet. Am I right?
That's close enough. I don't have those right in front, but that's correct, yeah, that's...
Because the way I see it, the Route 60 was 85,000 square feet allowed. If you take 15% of that, that would be 12,000, and add that to...
198?
Or 16,000, I'm sorry, yeah. Add that to it. My impression was it was to take 15% of either one and add it to the other one, not 30% of the total.
Maybe the applicant can clarify that.
That's what you want, right?
And the condition can be structured that way.
The way you said 30% of the 198 is wrong.
Why don't we let the applicant?
Yeah.
If you would like to come up.
Steve Mountclery with Point West. Yeah, that's, and the reason that this particular condition came about is we had the site plan approved for 85,000 square feet for town center. That had some second-floor buildings. We actually have an AA in front of staff right now where we've kind of added some buildings. It's all single-story. It comes up to about 77,400 and some square feet. So we just asked, well, can we take that additional between 77 and 85 and possibly transfer it? Or conceivably, if we had some additional two-story buildings, so...
So you're talking about 15% from the one section, not of the total?
That's correct. So our idea was 15% of the 85,000.
I think that'll clarify what you're talking about.
That's what we envision now, if staff, if it came out differently in the verbiage, you know, we're certainly...
I mean, you really, what you want to do is go from town center, the stuff you're building out, you're not going up in the air where you've lost your square footage and move it up front, and not lose the square footage.
Assuming we even have the, you know, we can meet the other parking requirements, et cetera.
Right. You don't know if it'll fit yet.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
And this gives you flexibility.
That's correct.
Stephen has a question for you. Back to the numbers again. You've got 85,000 square feet in the town center.
Had, yeah.
That's correct.
You want to be able to shift 15% or 12,750 square feet to this Route 60. And you've got 77,400 in the town center now.
That's correct.
If you take 12,750 in addition that you're moving to Route 60, I think you're coming out with a little bit more than what you originally had?
Well, we couldn't. We couldn't exceed...
They can't exceed whatever it is.
We can't exceed the 100, I think it's 198,000 that was approved. So we certainly couldn't exceed the total square footage that's approved.
If it comes out at...
Including both of them.
At 14.2% or what, it's just whatever.
And it might actually, if we actually took the, you know, were approved at 85, we're now going to 77. If we moved all of that up to State Road 60, I think it would be about 8% of 77, or approximately 10%. Realistically, that's probably the maximum that happened, but, you know, we just...
Okay, I just want to understand that this is not an additional 5,000.
Regardless, you're already capped in the square footage.
Right, we're capped at the 198 total.
That's what I want to...
While you're here, would you explain the East Village gates? Is this just for marketing, because some people want to buy something with a gate?
I'm going to let Chuck take care of that.
Chuck Mecklen, Point West. And one of the things I just wanted to add in regards to the shifting of all this, one of the things when you approve one of these projects, and we've been back a couple times, and if we'd have thought everything through in January, we would have probably asked for some of the things that were here tonight. It's probably a question that's being looked at from the commission point of view as well when you approve these larger projects. Do you build some flexibility? Do you trust staff to work with the applicant? Because coming back and coming back and coming back is just a time-consuming process. The East Village, what we're doing is there's a local builder that's interested in being involved in the residential construction. East Village has always built in a gated section. We took a look at this and where it sits with the canal surrounding on three sides of it. It doesn't have an interconductivity to anything else road-wise. You know, pedestrian traffic, bicycles, things of this nature will still come and go. It's a vehicular situation was what, you know, was actually being looked at, and it's being done in many TNDs now. Windsor TND is completely gated, but it doesn't have any impact in any way, shape, or form on any of the residential area, I mean, any of the commercial area and how it interacts back with residential and then interconductivity to that.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay, any other questions of either staff or the applicant?
Just a short one, John. I assume that the shift of the 15% is set inside the parameters of the original landscaping, so there's no necessity for any additional landscaping?
Correct. The buffers are not going to change at all, so those, the net buildable area is the same, so they'll have to fit it within those parameters.
Okay. That includes parking? I mean, that's what he's saying. He's not sure how much of that he can even use. He just doesn't want to give it away yet.
So is this becoming more like a subdivision then?
Yes.
It jumped over the urban service area, right? This is one of the exceptions?
It's in the, it's a building, when it touches the urban service area, it was allowed to be built.
Yeah, this is a TND that bisects the urban service line as provided for in our comp plan, yes. It's one of the, it's a comp plan incentive we have to get TND projects built, yes.
I would, I don't think I'd describe it as a subdivision, though.
What would you describe it as?
Well, I mean, it's different. You've got commercial access, you've got commercial built into the project that has access both either in the center and the State Road 60. I mean, it's, it's still, the residents still have access to it, unlike a normal subdivision. I mean, it's...
Correct. It's a mixed-use community. The golf course, portion of the golf course goes through the East Village, so you'll have golf course traffic through there. And again, they'll have access back to the west, to the commercial. So it is a mixed-use community, and this, the East Village is still a part of it overall.
I guess you would, what you're saying is that it's more of a subdivision to you because the commercial is out by 60 and all the houses are back on the south end.
Right. But the golf course surrounds this property, so that makes it contiguous.
Yeah, yes.
What, nine holes on that side?
Yeah. Nine and nine.
And nine on the other?
Yeah.
If I could for Dr. Baker, the concept originally with the property on State Road 60 was a, if you will, a larger-type structure that would be more of a job-oriented center. Right now, there's a medical building going up, and the same folks are looking to close on the other tracks on that east side so they can create a campus-like setting with those commercial buildings. The town center, which borders 16th Street, which now will have more of a almost residential, yet it's commercial in aspect. It has the overhangs and the balcony look, things of this nature that are incorporated in that. And that is more of the service center area that interacts with the community, where you'll find the gym, the dentist, the dry cleaner, things like this that are oriented around more of the residential aspect, but yet it's along 16th Street, so it has easy access in and out to the facility. So it really creates a good interconductivity, but yet it gives it its own little area of each with its own traffic needs and concerns.
But, and there are school sites still in here?
And the school site, which is in their five-year work plan, is adjacent to the town center element. And actually, I think, as people will see as this unfolds, it always becomes a question that everybody's concerned, is how do we grow with Grace? I think when you see the architectural style that's going to be built there, the medical building is going up right now, I think this will be something that in the years to come, people will look back and say, there we did something vision-wise, just what we had always hoped to see. And it's very simple to say that you have the school site there next to the town center element. Obviously, when parents are dropping people off, the kids and things of this nature in the morning, to go over to a restaurant, to a bagel shop, to grab something, to go to the health club, to drop the dry cleaning off, it takes trips off of the situation. Because I could see somebody living, obviously, outside of Point West, dropping the children off, but there's all these services contained there. And that's what we start to talk about, having less trips on the road system because services are readily available.
Well, that was the whole idea originally, years ago. This is going to be, and I remember this so distinctly, this is going to be no gated community. It's going to be open, public, walkable shops you could go to. And now then, all of a sudden, gates are starting to appear, it's closing little sections off, and that's why I have trouble with this. By the way, one of the school board members said they were going to use that to put their administration building on.
The...
The school site?
The school site.
We're not here, we're not here to debate school policy, and our representative is not here tonight, so...
I'm just passing on information. I'm just passing on... My problem is, it's more and more, it's looking at a closed community. And that's, the original concept is there's not going to be any gates here.
Again, the pedestrian traffic is still accessible totally. It's just a vehicular situation. And obviously, in the lakes, the retirement section, there is a, there's just a concern there. It's a need that they very much are looking at. It's a perception of security and...
I think the subdivision part, the subdivision look, Chuck, is when you take 74th Avenue and just look at the east, you probably can say, well, it looks like a subdivision, even though it is attached to the rest. If it was closer in, you may not have that, and that's where you want the gates. But I think is, and that's why I was asking, I mean, if you've got a builder that wants to build in there, you're looking at something that has, is more market-driven, is that what your space is for?
That's part of it. And also, though, we've taken the time with the gating system. As you know, on 74th, you have a bridge there that goes in. The gating system is actually back by the golf course area, so when you visually go down the road system, you're not really going to be looking at the gate system. It's going to be tucked back in there.
There's no gatehouse, right?
No, sir. No gatehouse.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions of staff or the applicant before I open the public hearing? Public hearing is now open. And with no rush to the mics, public hearing is now closed.
That's a rush is over?
Any more discussion, or would you all like to make a motion?
Oh, I would like to just follow on Dr. Baker's concerns. I agree wholeheartedly with you, and I'd like to see this be the, the end to switching out commercial properties from the downtown center to the Route sixty section because this is supposed to be the town center. The idea is to keep the traffic inside, to provide services for the people in this project, and I just don't want to see it eaten away at anymore. Now, you already have a seventy-seven thousand square foot building that you've got projected for this? Or do you, or have you come in? When do you expect that to go under construction? And I know the economy is really pushing your project back a little bit in time.
And you're talking about town center?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Well, what, what our plan is, that obviously, the medical building is going on, State Road sixty. They're looking to do a second building up there. The school situation is moving along, and with the announcement of that, we're also going to do the town center situation. And it's just plain economics. It's the simplicity that a business going in in today's trying times would feel most secure and best to know that there is a major collector, and a school system or a school in itself is something where services such as what'll be a town center will be easily available to them. And it's going to be, the whole concept of doing that sort of town center where it becomes accessibility, it becomes less trips on the road, it becomes an easy in and out. It's not like going into some other strip center situations. It's going to be limited, and it's going to be limited to, if you will, services. The dentist, the gym.
But you don't have a timeframe on that, do you, Chuck?
What we're hoping to do is to see that taking place in the fall/winter of this year or this late into '08.
Okay. And have you heard any word about a school not going in that location?
No. The school's on the five-year work plan for that site, and the old Osceola site would be where the administrative building would be going.
Okay.
Is what the discussions are with the school board.
Okay, that's-
And that was for their June public-
Strike Craig's comment from the record.
Thank you. That makes me feel a lot better.
Okay. Makes me feel better, too. But it, it is on the five-year-
To laugh at the election.
At that site.
See after the election.
Chuck, you have seventy-seven thousand square feet for the town center?
Yes, sir.
So, that's really about a seven percent change, not the fifteen. Well, you, you want fifteen for flexibility?
Was the change on that, was it a single-story, two-story to single-story? Was it aesthetics or?
There was a couple of issues. One of the situations that everybody envisioned was at the town center, it would be a smaller box unit, if you will, in size and mass. We've worked with staff very diligently. The, the profile of the buildings will have the appearance of a two-story, but in reality, when you try and do a two-story in a small-box type structure, you take the stairwell, stairwell out, you put the elevator in, you have the mechanic room, you lose about fifteen percent of that building. And when you run the plain economics of doing that, you just cannot, by today's ADA codes, be able to build that and have it make any sense. It's an amazing situation if you want to have something that's a smaller commercial building. We took a very hard look at the homegrown-type businesses that fit into a two-thousand, a twenty-one-hundred, a twenty-six-hundred square foot footprint. And that was the nature of what we see, and that's the nature of what businesses that are, you know, providing services we're at in this, in this community. And that's why we came back to that design aspect.
Would you be, would you, in that mind, with that in mind, would you be recommending that if we did ever did something else like this, we'd have more commercial space and less residential to allow a little bigger building so that all that fit better? Did we make you too small?
No. I, I think what we did is, it, it depends if you want to do a two-story type structure. And it just has to do with meeting ADA code. I mean, Point West, since it was approved in ninety-nine, we've had several revisions to ADA code over these years, and it's, always becomes more restrictive, and it's more of a challenge.
Okay. Chuck, thank you.
Thanks.
I'll recommend approval.
A second?
You got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Got two, Dr. Baker and Craig.
Uncle Craig and Dr. Baker.
Okay. Next item is, on commissioners' matters. You all received an email today from Stan, if you've seen your emails, I hope you have, that showed the final consensus recommendations for the mining regulations workshop yesterday, with some of the additions we made to his list highlighted in yellow. And I think that, you know, we've, we've worked on it, this is fresh in our minds. If, I hope all of you have reviewed this. If you have any comments or additions, deletions, we'll, we'll throw it back out for one more shot here, and we've still got a little time, I guess, but-
And if I could just, just say that if you, if you don't have any now, but you have some in the next couple of days, just email me back. The reason I wanted to get it out quickly was so that I wouldn't forget from all my notes, and be, the fresher the better. But if you all have any, any input now, or you want to give me an email in the next few working days, that, that would be just as well.
The only one I had is, we did talk about the, under, where you appropriately phrased it, general recommendations not related to the LDR modification, where we do the countywide hydrological study. I think we talked about a seismic study as well.
Yes.
We did.
They would be tied together. So, if they've got the-
Right.
-osmides that-
Including the seismic profile you're talking about, county-wide.
They wanted, they wanted, they wanted to hear it all. We're going to give it, give them all.
The other thing, Stan, on the best management practices, which we refer to, I, you know, they as updated. Whenever we compile or receive from Chuck, or however we're going to get a best management practices, that, that needs to be updated-
Yes.
And concurrency with that on a reapplication after a year.
Oh, that's in 1B.
Right. That, that's, and what, what 1B now means is that the county will have to keep that list updated as, as new management practices come along that can be applied to previously approved mines, and that would be the time to review it.
And on a given year, the next annual permit, they would have to agree to move up.
That's right. And that's the intent of 1B.
And in, and eight, I, I would say, and I would include best management practices in that.
Okay, I see that.
One other item on number twenty, in deference to Jerry. He has clarified existing twenty-acre phase requirement to limit the extension of the disturbed area. In parentheses, you've got fifteen to twenty. We ought to say ten to twenty because he keeps saying ten.
Yeah.
We may, I may agree with twenty, but he said ten, and we're going, like we said, we're passing up the ladder, all that we know.
I, I heard a variety of numbers, and I-
Going once?
Ten to twenty, zero to twenty.
Going once, going twice?
Ten to twenty.
Remember fifteen, fifteen, fifteen.
One other, Stan, on, on, on thirty, I would specifically say, and updated, best management practices.
Right. You can do that?
Updated. So, that it's always current.
Right.
Always change.
On twenty-six, where it says establish the paving threshold for hauling routes, we didn't purposely, didn't talk about numbers, but that's where you're going to get into numbers as to whether we deal with paving or not.
That's correct. That's some of the hard work yet to be done, yeah.
And even, right. That's going to be a good one.
Yeah.
But I didn't notice any, anything about trying to deal with multi-mines or, or areas with-
Well, cumulative impacts.
Right. We, we speak to the cumulative impacts for shared haul routes in a couple-
Well, it does on here about paving. I mean, but we didn't, and I, I don't, maybe we should leave it alone, but I, we were talking about trying, you know, in case Eighty-Second Avenue was mine, 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 mine.
I think in, as far as staff's position is, you would, you would need to take that into account. Cumulative impacts would need to be taken account with paved road requirements. In fact, we do that now in our paved road requirement section for commercial projects on unpaved roads. You know, it's a, it's a concept we've had in the past in those situations.
But that's just for considering whether it should be paved or, or-
Correct.
Still remain unpaved. What about the cumulative effect of, like George was saying, mine after mine after mine? Where are we going to restrict the traffic? How many trucks are too many?
Right. And that's-
I know that's a tough one.
We don't have, we talk about cumulative effects. I'm thinking about hydrology, et cetera. I mean, at, there's some point in time where several mines together probably have more of an impact than one, so.
At one time, yeah.
Right. And thirty-one, I think, gets to that issue of considering limiting total haul route dump traffic.
And that's the traffic side, but I mean-
Correct.
Well, I'm concerned about the traffic. You're concerned about the cumulative effect of the hydrology, which is another-
Well, I mean, just cumulative effects in general, that's what-
And I think each, each hydrology report for each mine is going to have to take into consideration the others. And in terms of the total amount of traffic, I think we're looking at the level of service standards we have. I mean, those, those indicate how many vehicles can use a road without the road being-
They differentiate between big trucks, small trucks? You mean, they differentiate between trucks as vehicle, as traffic?
It doesn't.
No, it doesn't. But, but basically, that, that is an objective quantitative standard that you've got.
Unless we can figure out, or for some reason, figure out another number.
Right. If, if you've got-
Not out of the air.
And it's based on paved or unpaved roads is the traffic count, too, right?
Yeah.
But the only difference this is going to make is whether you pave it or you don't pave it. It's not going to make any difference in how many trucks you're going to allow on one stretch of road. And that's been a big problem. That's been, the, the residents in that area are saying, we don't want, you know, too many trucks. And for us to establish that too-many number-
But, but why? What is the objective you're trying to establish? Are you gaps in the traffic, or being able, you know, congestion? I mean, what is the objective?
Well, you're saying that you're going to ensure gaps, but how, how are you going to do that?
That, that's what congestion does. The congestion measure assures that there's gaps, too.
Can you give us an example of how many trucks possibly will be maximum on the Eighty-Second Avenue?
Well, definitely, if you have a two-lane road at level of service D, it's generally in the mid-eight-hundred vehicles that you can have, hourly directional.
I, I was thinking about this with the, the mines. I mean, believe me, I, I, there're people out there that may, mines save their business or their well-being, and, and I'm certainly not against that. But I, you know, we, we do limit, I was thinking about the commercial. What are the two commercial zonings where we allow office space, the commercial office, but we will not allow, I'm thinking of fast foods. We can't, we can't put a commercial within a mile of each other. You can't have a space that would allow certain types. I was thinking, Seal Suite, bottom of Seventy-Fourth is commercial. Across the street is commercial, whatever the office is only.
Right. There're certain types of designation, commercial designations.
They wanted a bank, they were going to sell the land, put a bank in there. They couldn't do it because it wasn't allowed under that designation, and we had a restriction on distances on that type of zoning.
Professional institutional.
Right. Distances between another, between another node.
You know, I'd go blank at times. And I didn't know that with, if there was a possibility of considering, as, and this is, put only into consideration if there ought to be a number, two mines within a half a mile, or two mines within a mile of each other until one's finished, and then the neighbors can fall in. That is, you know, he who gets in first in line gets it, and he who doesn't. But I don't know if there's something like that that could be done. There's certainly precedent with us looking at the types of commercial we have, so.
I think a separation distance, I'm not aware of a real objective reason for that. You could have, you know, you could have mines back-to-back accessing completely opposite in different roadways. Or if you had, if you had a three-mile separation distance on a roadway segment as long as Eighty-Second Avenue, they're still both going to use Eighty-Second. So, I think it has to do with, with road impacts. If that's, and, and what part of the road impact is, is the concern. You have to address, you have to address that.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, the only thing I was going to say is in your report, it would, so it doesn't drop through the cracks in the future generations or whatever, is we have a thing, is we can, is consider the cumulative effects of sand mining if grouped closely together. Numbers grew, and try, and, and just leave it there, because I'm not sure, when we get our first hydrology reports in, or we get other reports in, if we have three or four mines, if they have to keep figuring the cumulative effect, their studies may be accurate, they may not. We don't know, and I don't want to say absolutely, but I just, I think that they're probably, I, I'm not sure this, I think I have a reason to be concerned there, but that's, I understand what, I, I can't give you anything specific, so I was just, as a general note.
Well, I think what I, what I can do for, for the time being with the list is on number seven, item seven, where we talk about the hydrology reports, to make sure we have an item in there about taking accumulative impact of-
Taking into effect, cumulative, okay.
As well as existing.
All right.
And then on thirty-one, based on the discussion we just had, is probably expanding that a little bit to emphasize it.
All right. I mean, I just, I think we ought to have it in there.
Gentlemen, I'm sorry, I'm going back to the eight-hundred trucks per hour. That's just totally inappropriate. And I, I would like to come up with some other way to regulate that, other than just, you know, our normal traffic studies. And Bob, you're sitting there going, and you, you know, no idea, but there's got to be something out there that we can do. Well, all right, that's something I think we're going to have to discuss a little bit later. Number thirty-six, penalties to include bond forfeiture, stop work periods, termination, or non-renewal of mining permits. I'd like to have non-renewal put in there.
Can we do that, I guess?
Sure.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think that's consistent with, with the intent there.
Anything else?
No, the truck traffic, the numbers, and that's it. That's my only major concern right now.
Doctor?
And fifteen, on C, that was an added one. You know, three hundred, a hundred-foot is for agricultural lands. Could we, I'd be in favor of making this three hundred for all lands agricultural. I mean, if you're going to protect wetlands and conservation, public conservation areas, why aren't we protecting our agriculture? I mean, right now, a hundred, I guess from here to that wall is probably what you're talking about. And that's not very far. Even three hundred, three hundred feet is only a hundred yards.
A football field.
A football field.
Probably because they asked not, they didn't care about being protected, because if they can, that would allow them to dig more sand. But the hundred, the hundred feet, the reason, I think the hundred feet is that makes one lot. A hundred-foot isn't, that's the minimum depth on a lot.
You're saying farmers might want to be protected until they want to mine?
That's what I'm saying. Be careful what you ask for and who, and how you protect.
But again, we're just reflecting-
Farmers want it every way we can.
We were reflecting the discussion, and Dr. Baker is adding something y'all can, I mean, I'm here to take notes.
Right. I mean, I didn't, I, it didn't, wasn't necessary to me. I don't mind if you all feel like it's necessary, then we can put it in. But I think that, in general, we're okay in ag. I just was trying to protect the conservation areas because there's a lot of public concern, and this just gave you a bigger buffer.
And yet, my other comments on, on our, on, you have general recommendations, and you have A, B, and A was, you know, the hydrologic study. Now, these are not related to the LDRs. So, could we get a, get these two or three items, you know, put forward as a motion tonight that can get to the county commission right away? I mean, this, this is not related to the LDRs, right?
Well, I think it's related to sand mining, and I, this is going to the county commission fairly quickly. It's going into next month.
Yeah, I think probably first or second meeting in September, something like that.
But I was, I know that Adair is coming up to talk to the county commission.
Yeah, I think actually, I, I thought I heard discussion, I wasn't at, at the meeting, I listened on parts of it last Tuesday. I thought the, the-
He's going to be there next week.
The issue was discussed already once last Tuesday.
Right. I, I know what Bob would like, and I, but I think since it's tied to sand mining, I would, I think it would be better to leave it in the full form of recommendation and let them take it in the full, in that perspective. Myself, that, I mean, I would rather not get into motions because it's, we haven't really announced anything. I mean, this is just our consensus of what we've come up with, summary.
But I, you know, the, having a test is important, I think, for a lot of other reasons about our water, and that's why I think it's, it's sort of a standalone issue. I mean, we've increased our, our, from eight, the last test was eighty-eight, he was talking about, the survey, and we had about a seventy percent increase over that twenty-year period in, in population, and I would think that would get a higher priority. I'd like to make a motion, but if I only get a second, then I guess it'll go with the rest of it.
Chairman's going, ah, ah, I don't hear you.
The other thing is on, on the county utility well field, didn't we say something about that? Giving, giving our county water supply a little bit more protection?
Well, I think they, they put something, we did, couldn't give them a def, we weren't giving them a recommendation on distance, but we have them add, they added it.
Correct. Eighteen?
It's number eight, it's in the middle somewhere, yeah.
Okay, and-
Consider us establishing significant setback.
Okay. So, they're going to, you're going to be looking into what appropriate setback would be?
Which means?
And that, that will be going before the county commission?
This will be, yes, this will be, this entire list will be presented to the Board of County-
And it'll be, you'll have a figure or some-
No. I, I think, and some of the, I mean, this is going to take more work in the coming months to, to flesh some of these out. Assuming the board doesn't say, well, well, thanks for this recommendation, but, but don't bother with it or something like that. But, yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to look at what the impacts are with public water supply wells and what the distance is appropriate. We won't have that information in, in the next couple of weeks when we go to the board. But if the board okay's this, we'll research it further, and we'll have to put this in. to a, to a proposed amendment.
Well, same thing with 36. We should come up, that flow chart you had.
Right.
We'd come up with definitive steps.
That's right.
Do you still have a copy of those flow charts?
I have a few extra ones, yes, I do. Would you like?
Never had a loss for killing trees in that office.
That's right. It makes good scrap paper, but...
Well, we could work from the flow chart.
Sure, sure. No, that's why we use it, because it, it helps to visualize whatever the final numbers become.
Any other comments or thoughts, additions?
Nice job, Stan.
On 37, I'd just like to see you strike that funded by permit applicants, applicants. That's a given, basically, but it certainly strikes out any innovative methods that might come up. I mean, that industry's changing so much. Blocks of time are available, and certainly the county's GPS allowances and responsibilities are going to increase. So I'd just like, that just restricts it too much, I think. There are some other allowances that may come up in the future.
I just, just pointing out, in 37, we're combining the enhanced traffic law enforcement. I mean, that, that could mean contract deputies or not. I know we go into a different alternative that was presented under A. Are, are you referring just to the GPS?
Yeah.
You, oh, you're not, you're not objecting to fund it to, just the GPS section?
Right.
Being funded by the applicant.
Yeah. I'll put your name in there, Mr. Smith, funded by...
Sure. Sure.
Well, the county's not going to pay for the...
Anything else before we move?
The county's not going to pay for the GPS.
No, but I mean, we can, they can look at, at the time something comes up, they certainly can look at it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Tie it into a system, a countywide system. Okay.
Anything else? If, if, with the exception of the, the setback section, I think we have general consensus. I think unless there is objection, I'd say this moves forward as quickly as they can. Have consensus.
I'll make the changes that we've gone over tonight, and I'll email you all a draft of the staff report in the next couple of weeks before it goes to the, to the board, so you've got it. And we'll make sure we let you all know when it goes to the board.
I guess Labor Day means Labor Day, right?
Yeah, probably so.
Okay. Thank you. Any planning matters?
Just two items I, I wanted to report to you all. One is, since you last met, the Board of County Commissioners approved a rezoning that you all recommended that they approve. That was the heavy commercial, the general commercial rezoning southwest corner of 41st Street and 43rd Avenue. And also, we, we've spoken last P&amp;Z meeting about having a special workshop, or maybe, maybe two, for the EAR, the, the big portions, you know, land use, transportation, and so forth. What we're looking at at this point, it'd probably be a really good use of time to actually have a joint workshop between the P&amp;Z and the Board of County Commissioners. And a date that looks like it might work at this point is on September 19th. I believe that's a Friday in the morning. And then a, a possible second workshop date, if needed, would be September 30th. Those are the two dates right now, and we'll be in contact with you all, but that seems to be dates that could work at this point.
Is this in the morning? Did I miss?
That's correct, yep. The idea would be morning for these days.
Nine o'clock?
Correct.
We're also looking at trying to get you drafts of these EARS early, so, so that you'll have time to read them. As you, as you note, you've got a draft of the transportation element year in your packet today, and hopefully next week, we might be able to get the land use, future land use year, and the conservation year to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Land use, Bob, going to be emailed, or will they bring it as a packet to us, or